El public hearing lo per contractors abul belau el girela Senate Bill 12-22 el ngi mo amend procurement law mo mistriate el ira small to medium enterprise SMEs contractors abul belau mos ilso is para participation rurabelmento diu erad bora ditel regidhe dikutel te al le introduce al members agamiti so te al gamitir gidhe a CIP a ngani ngakl el Brian Ambrayer el chairman ngi eh vice chair atanakl senator Basilius l'oratei adirek l'taramebete al gamiti dibusa atanakl vice president ra Senate tel kwartei ong ngi ngila kwarte ngani atanakl senator Nakamural ngi mos ilo bangge del may adirek l'taramebera senator Mangsaobe dibuser belare l'al time almutelwa na membera atanakl senator Rudim ngi gidhe o kusei senator Tabulwal mentara membera te al gamiti no dakatsele me bangge de l'al chilse mangagidhe ngara katugl senator Whips te regidhe members se sel CIP committee ra Senate re l'al longotri bo ngelo l'bil eh ngakamal mrengasulela president Abaulis mos il join regid ngi Maflor Lider Mariur, madirek l'senator Pedro auera domu len soakl Ford Regord de akunit ra staff melwa maigl meskebiu one by one el introduce minwasi kom ruwata ngi ngara nganakl el gombali adang ngi
Naga Gen Susugi, naga representra gombali ngak el gombali ra ader belau, el Crown Builders
Naga deme obak, naga owner ra December Construction ra tida adagl ngi uku roo taurol giram
Good afternoon, this is Patrick Ziglioli representing Apex Construction
Naga bilita kamine, umteera gombali ngak ra WCC yak nga tiyala bangge la birra, adi klorolo banggeke
Ongi wul senator se naga aldri intelle ye owner ra Ace Construction
Malungil Suma Bekalath, naga Wayland Joseph representra BMJ Construction
Good afternoon, my name is Mark representing M&amp;A Builders
Ali nga kaklaka McKinley Singew TR yak representra M&amp;A Builders
Ongi suelbe ngaa CFTT mil owner ra Micro Resource
Ongil Malungil suelbe ngarar regul senators marregul ngaratiyanga ka isbang saitol omteera ch CNC Underground Services, Masister Company ngi CNC Cleaning Services
Good afternoon, Imanwel Agda representing WCTC
Ah badaw, it's Adang Six Eddie Contractors
Good afternoon everyone, I'm Neve Makasait from WA Construct
Ok gom sulan rogu ye for the interest of non-palauan speakers in the room I will speak in Tagalog, sorry, in English so you may have received the copy of Senate Bill 12-22 several weeks back asking for your comments and feedback however they may be, whether supportive or against so the purpose of this meeting with all of you contractors is to go over the basic amendments to the procurement law the real purpose is to is to relax the performance and payment bond requirements in the procurement law so that we can open up opportunities to small medium enterprises to get into government contracts so basically the amendment per to lower the bonding requirements for wholly owned Palauans, wholly Palauan companies by increasing the 100,000 threshold for local preference if you know all sorry so the existing law states that when a wholly owned Palauan company is awarded a contract under 100,000 they are automatically waived of the performance and payment bond so this amendment seeks to increase that to 250,000 and the reason being that if we look at the allocations for projects usually in the form of the stimulus grant from Taiwan we have no projects allocated at 100,000 anymore all projects start at 250,000 so we're trying to adjust the law to what's being practiced and to give more preference to locally owned companies to participate without the burden of performance and payment bonds the other amendment also would allow the procurement officer to waive or reduce performance bonds for contracts between 250,000 and under 500,000 for locally owned but for foreign owned companies the requirement at 100% will be a new change and the reasons for restricting foreign owned is the inherent risk that they are not wholly owned Palauan they may close up shop and leave and we have no protection and then the other amendment would be that anything over 500,000 the procurement officer has the authority to lower the bonds to 50% another amendment to the law which is a new section is to outline the specific factors that the procurement officer needs to look at before he approves or disapproves a request for bond waiver or bond reduction in the past there was no legislative requirement that the contracting officer would look at in terms of criteria when he makes that decision so it was a very subjective decision to make we have an opportunity in this amendment to set into law what he needs to look at I know during the introduction of this law, this bill the comments from the floor wanted to add one of those criteria would be the financial status of companies that the procurement officer would look at instead of just past performance, ability to complete the projects and past records no, we have to look at everything and those will be the languages of the law so this meeting today is to really come here not to teach you about the bill but to get your feedback what would you recommend to add or delete from the bill to make it more effective and more helpful to you as contractors
Madime se gidhe yak payo idhi teal maigl e rong ngari ngir gumiya soal make a comment or make edits or changes that you see would make it more beneficial to everyone where the committee is here to listen to those adang ok madime se gidhe yak payo idhi aulao l'el rong ngan ngari ngasual ngul girel teal uldas mulaa teyate al
Yes, thank you Chairman there are two or three companies that just walk in please introduce yourselves
Ongara Timis Construction, Nankle Rassella Hendrick
Good afternoon, I'm Juneel Delara, project engineer of Pepper Construction
Malwayse ku idhi aulao l'el bayegor merang contractors mel siutche regel guk feedback se gumiwa somilche l'ongel gamiti
Ali malungil soal akro ol mes rabil le kuramal ongil kuramal ni sado se gidhe ku kua lamal te la procurement officer akro adirek l'oro o mes teal le ulaa bond te i think goes way bagal mora trust territory akro adirek l'oro o mes egal l'warasirawd ingel mwa kwam yak i got to find out l'warasit regem le chencer sele procurement requirement te te ra 2004 di tabai ngil beti se l'ngada qadar al la mdaqsa l'mal kuramo gomba gar se di wo mes ra plel chencer ngi atabai ngil beti se l'performance bond gore ngu se l'bit bond mo 15% esee adim regol orregadhe ngi mo mega urior akro o mes mo se galal se edal akro o mes se sel 100% performance, 100% payment mos ase edal adirek l'ama garar ngi sulam ak direk l'ero aminga adu la baby le egal l'insurance companies ketigetirel haadi issue of premium se te ra takmaset teal project te adirek l'klararol mang ku k'el ilngul meriyo sulam yak te regamal di support agabla l'ongo dadu Wayland oldis egal lamam regal rakal kumam gregal contractors mal mrengakumam se gidhe l'100% l'bit bond l'100% l'performance bond te ya kumam lamso l'ulit al mitinga ki lamam etel dimal gur gumiwa ending finally senator Rudim mos salue adang mo hopefully ngayate alam gregal gombali de kan malget kale nde kal ngarang kamama da kasama more than four or five project al 200% l'requirement yuxme amilional d'ongok rabang e urior nde ka udodha girel d'ongok, udodha di urior rogu mung semreli wayse manmokma tarkamama malu lauriram ekamama di gombali belau ekamama egal payment l'government kamama egal arap, egal arap payment progress alakal mes mentara l'indakal tov da check nde ka gombali lamwa udodha al government te emisa ma tablo dimla ka udodha tov do abaidi insurance a ngaya teka cost cloud risk ak udodha di d'ongok l'financial mrengak project egal lamatmal l'project lamde wayse apang ayandi vipim lotov do mo koth klaurior mung kumam lamso let ya malungil mer kamam mal mal me agima support regi sulam
Sulam eh, mister takamine kau ma owner ra BMJ owner ra BMJ de ra senakal adra lala, ndingari ya malungil advisor ngi se l'togore a bit bond a ileakl band se gumiya madengil kumam na participate ra procurement se l'10% l'bit bond nde ka dongit ntingari ngit teal proposal la se se l'om samitra bidrakau ngireml samitra bit band se l' in a form of a bond wlu bang kassis tegel in the amount of 10% se l'bit proposal ragau esee se l'aurda kontrat el moringel vining vider, esee l'banda almutel gaya se l'ego ragau se diloregadhe ngi al government l'warasit al sugum mister Toribion a tabesa notisov aurde l'warasin dia ngana moetik al government se l'orgu di se l'udodha nde ka d'relit teal process l'mogora mangal di d'boam g'dobide guk tov de nde ka peneltirin so se gidhe amokte gresi esee l'togora performance ma payment bond de BMJ mral mrela ra titi se ra l'got l'moriga investment se l'mrigel abulura egal bulura trust territory eng tomlo bugik ra fly by night contractors l'abulura mrigel l'wadilme l'gora di ngisiksi te maudoh de mral e gidhe e gidhe dimla kaskul edal se gidhe l'1960s, '70s tomlo filar adra trust territory gametos ngirel over protector teal egal risk ra ma ul mulu 100% mahana, payment 100% l'performance di el al since ra I would say since a 2018, egitier abodo last mul akadumlar tilang, emlas mrengi elang te al g'dongartigi de mregone egitier mna introduce ngi l'warasit g'domgarang adiri dius ngi eh dius ngi, ndigamia madengil l'warasit se l'deriusa band e gi increase ra risk al government wayse mung awan ra mechanism l'bo l'omes ngi contracting officer l'warasit oyak redusur band ragau l'Ace Construction ndi a risk ra al government adiakal mitigated yak increase ra retention ra a payment e gil progress payment gamira amawa buyl agim increase se l'retention l'mot 20% l'wagim telgib l'orgadha telgib te l'ipengem l'protect teal project mes se l'durich ra certain threshold lamral moge gregel risk, e gidhe amge gogid l'gaya se se l'retention l'mral mune moge gregel gumiya madengil en ten l'al time a retention esee l'ome ngala ra 50% l'marg l'es klvidu se se l'retention l'mot 5% mgom d'ongil eh se gidhe awadib l'gora best management practice elang baymula sebe edal guk meruri ngi se l'akrala l'sindiakala akonger gidhe mgom sulan regel a comment gumiwa anybody else?
Amgama igim sa Ace Construction
Malmil tale molgoniye senatora meride yak te regel omes kamama kumam dimkasal contractors l'ngara 120 l'akal wid eh direk l'omdason direk l'ongit te l'performance ser kamam yak te regel omdason tirgal kamam l'contractors amru l'isel gombali ramam te regel guk wayse gidhe l'watomleya project maluma kaklaka te regel sebe l'tergale guk mo rulage gidhe l'war performance ma payment band l'direk l'omes se timo te rat eligible er te gidhe l'50% datang te dimal mal mal di 120 sida gukroadi
Sulam amister talley se gidhe l'wanda amendment l'ngartiang se l'mosa ngara alela direktora Paulie works l'warasit se l'bo l'waive mal uwing reduce eng omes se gidhe gidhe l'bulduk l'critical ngara alse l'te gidhe proposal bill so I hope se gidhe address it to either concerner go
Maldisoakal ngu akte te al le ora nga sorel l'agamiti l'inviter ba malme mukamenta kamam ngirel tal bill te adirek l'malungil ngmo encourageam gregel gombali mos il participate egal urur ra constructioner belau endingari ngagregel girel se l'line one ra page 3 ma line 16 ra page 3 l'girel a waive a gil performance band, a payment band l'requirements l'mora Palauan owned company sendirek l'aplal mura gil gombali l'owner ader belau eh members se l'FA, F I A C F I A C, F I A C Foreign Investment Approval Certificate se l'line one ra page 3, ma line 16
Ndekal sebe emelo shobar belau l'construction alakam obasum eng yaam holy on for example l'asugum eng hanlesekongwa FIB ragau eh masugum lechiha ngani corporation ragau eh 10% l'owner ngi a ader belau atwennil owner ngi a adra ngodl blue girel mawethurura FIB i processing di the way te gidhe l'statute a written, te proposal la written mulase ngabert te gidhe l'foreign owned partially foreign owned leng sebe emo foreign owned leng ak gombali ngari ngi 50-50 ader belam alam mabrigel l'asee dosing foreign owned l'adu l'teakalul FIB mangabert te gidhe l'solong kawa om contractor ngirem either gahol owned l'ader belau or goba FIB licenser ragau mes se ngabert te gidhe l'guk gombali l'inklute l'gombali l'ala ba F I A C te l'ala ba egal e FIB permit te
Omse n'also ng'aplal mura gil gombali l'with F I A C wayse eh di a FIB wish l'kliya gumesa te te namostat l'pushback egal e construction company l'mey ik mutilasend yaam molaya investment l'gumiwa project l'gumiwa adha sebe l'ngari ora egal e ah 500 ta se awal threshold ndigin se widdre l'in morebap mangkuktiakal te gidhe l'adra ngodl blue l'me wushobar te adakal ngosanga malu bel lut malamala kuksobar ader belal begegre project te se ngara uldas m'widrak tala du ngin poda edal ngi eh chairman leng la ngaga ma praktisa la maklamise ke l'batog l'mey l'gombali te soril me wa project ra egal al government te kore mal mal ngatian ndapel maangua a corporate l'market ngi amosonsa egal te al l'lagora ader belau ngirel malas m'figa out asee if a construction company ngirem l'mey oye paydu ya ngara lak ma se FIB gaset tiyang sebe l'ader belal gutmakli l'tora construction masugun sebe l e girel dinara application gal linguk ngari ngi baby ra egal e gombali l'asepedu gutmok l'se ngari ngi especially se l' one example ang gombali no Yosef Sabay para a shell e gede yak a egip per se skill dal adam ru mangkuk ngari ngi insurance coverage se l'egidhe mgegida girel l'figa out asee magarada headper gumiwa ma adra ngodl blue ben system ma malaicens te ngirel l'asasinggang provider ra egal e service e gidhe l'aseduruli asee bsume gidhe l'aseduruling l'dinaringi melora ndigin insurance gabert te gidhe Ok, ndak malgoleng te regel omes ambetoga gombali l' construction l'frontal adra ngodl blue eh direk l'ngari ngi gombali l'adra ngodl blue owner ngi ngari ngi member ngi l'ader belau ulmaku ye kaseseng aplal moste gide malu men dimora gombali l'owner, wholly owner ngi ader belau
Ale, ek inset teal questioner go eh mis saitol so mlamadongo ra ulolela Senate ra l'origa discussion teal bill l'lo singirel clear league de define ra holy on Palauan company l'lo singa l'ego d'bral madengil l'lo singa ngari ngi te la egidhe te giro fogore a frontal ding kley la kleti al gombali er adalo kurtri ngi management ngi financial se ngi a degal ngi se l'mo el al teme l'om tang te te al bill eng morgen a base l'section l'gire la definitions egad modifine se l'holy on l'lo sing te l'holy on d'omal ngara imi ngi leng nde kal soad l'entertain l'war front girel soad l'onggurur te l'construction industry eh ol sis per te la egidhe l'gregel gombali tiramrigel tirameso is para egal government project gumiwa moste gumiwa ngatyanga di olaba contractors government gumiwa rogu akteme madengil l'warasit gumiwa roguadi salasa reitaklila project l'mola ma umolai eh direk l'dir gorga bidding esoad l'teal purpose teal bill telgib loterga gasi l'mosbi ira baby l'adat mu eh agim madengil l'warasit l'two while each competition to you the end effect is positive more competition mo more more value for the investment eh direk l'ongo kaklalow der gumiwa is onboard contractors already yes, msumulam ra ngil gaminte te la egidhe l'ngirel l'holy on da givom define ngir al cel
Msumulam eh Chair te regel one ra girel se la yel payment band ma performance band oh ya performance band aongil ngil ngirel omesa kumamesa performance regal gombali kum mral se ilmula urior l'quality ready di se edal payment band akro ratalgib l'egal ku ngara ma supplier ngak ak ngara ka omra kases ngara ma supplier ngak askum nde yak paya per se l'supplier ngaki se l'ngari gal ma gort mung agi ol ngit akmulsabe l'edebrimover se gidhe l'payment band m'olbe otta regel mgegrel gombali l'malaya project le om reducing mo 50% a payment band ma performance band a 50% eng still om edal tablo mo 100% mung mal mal m'omaringa gamgegrel gombali l'mra project se gidhe l'koron mamak mulskum sebe l'edebrimover se gidhe l'payment band leng polbe otta government lamla gal ma asara ku ngaralala contractor gombali l'girel hara per se l
Wayse, msumulam ra point tragawi ak ti oi se te yak case in point mak ti oi se ngi l'asee ngari ngi contractor l'mle default eh ngari ngi performance mangari ngi payment band m'kaser l'default l'contractor eh urior rasaita aloit eh vendor se te lamangari ngi degal haraw so se gidhe l'payment band, se gidhe a mokte gresi so losabe l'al teal banding institution l'teker auriora field emregone teker abelsit te regel abelsit te al gombali te regel vendor se ngi so basangapoint ra rimura payment band ding increase ra risk al government tra mo entertain we will be a party to sumgomor gomakatu takragort al government nde kal logol mos is bral se g'direk l'malas mel protector al government se gidhe ah omdasol l'warasit to begin with a 250,000 l'merio eng full waiver ra wholly owned l'Palauan company eh emregone se edal entertain a 50% reduction malu bingte regel full waiver se l'250 mo 50,000 threshold omdasol l'asen sovoklemiwa yes, understand lamaloni l'asie apolda ka 50 ma 15 ng'100 di apolda 100 ma 100 then 200 so ak madengil l'warasit teal proposal bill if I may say so eh members te adu di l'akal malas ngi mung ak madengil l'warasit tianga even though a 100% l'band adirgo gopting ra baby I think it's a good starting point te gidhe eh as we move into the future l'adu omes se ngi l'warasit g'domgarata adalu't so it'll be a work in progress koming waku saadras ko kilo l'asikda swebal morebap emosoy ending that's the way it is g'de l'ulit te egidhe emregone as we roll out the new legislation emregone g'duk mmesa egel girel find weak emregone ku koya g'amendment te g'der mula sulam
Sulam It's like.
Senator Nakamura.
I'm like, it's like. The meeting, for him, actually, it's like. Um. It's like, it's like. It's like, a question. Yeah, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Why, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, assets, it's like. Yeah, for example, N D B P. Hmm, it's like, value, it's like. It's like, the percent, it's like. Uh, it's like, it's like. Equipment, it's like. It's like, the percent, it's like. The place, it's like, it's like.
Okay. It's like, Senator Nakamura. It's like, it's like. The whole, it's like, it's like. Yes, the collateral. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. And it's like, N D B P, fifty percent, it's like. Seventy percent. Ra, a praise, equipment, it's like. I think fifty percent. Oh, they increased to fifty? Oh, so it's seventy, seventy percent. The commercial bank, it's like, it's like. Then, it's like, it's like. The collateral, the bank of Hawaii.
Kalbo, Senator Udim.
So, Chairman, I'm like. It's like, it's like. How do you assess the bank, if I see, bank, it's like. They require cash, the bond, the security, the project. It's like, the risk assessment, it would take a risk, love and given, as a customer, it's like. Again, that services are provided.
Yeah, like, the bank of Hawaii, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Two hundred thousand, it's like, two hundred thousand, it's like. It's like, collateral, it's like.
Okay. It's like, it's like. The Google, it's like, bank services are provided, an array of services. It's like, conform, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, the client, it's like, it's like. It's like, N D B P, no risk factor, it's like, a float, it's like. Support, the local business. It's like, it's like. Okay, it's like, it's like.
It's like, it's like. Kalbo, Mr. Takamine.
It's like, Chairman. It's like, I'm like. It's like, it's like. The really, it's like, it's like. Sustainable business, it's like. Minimum, at least, it's like, four or five projects, it's like, sustainable business. Eh, more like, it's like, it's like. It's like, one project, it's like. It's like, it's like. Require a two hundred percent, it's like. That's eight hundred thousand, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. A two or three project. That's over a million dollars, it's like, it's like. And not to mention, it's like, it's like. It gives, it's like, it's like. Forecast, a tax, it's like, payment in advance. It's like, it's like. Eh, contractors. It's like, it's like. It's like, forecast. It's like, it's like. It's like, twenty five percent, another twelve percent, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. And still have to consider. It's like, it's like. Bank, N D B P, it requires a hundred percent cash. So, one million project, it's like, one million, it's like. More lines, thirty percent. A bank of Hawaii, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like.
It's like, it's like. It's like, five, it's like, two hundred fifty thousand, it's like. Armory, it's like. It's like, five hundred thousand, it's like, two fifty, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like, contracting official. Eh, I understand, it's like, the position, it's like. Let me tell you. Eh, it's like, it's like. It's like, tax system, it's like, one pay in advance. Of course, I give them. It's like, it's like. Y C, it's like, it's like, impact, it's like, cash flow. Yes, so I understand that. Eh, it's like, it's like. It's like, arrangement, it's like. Eh. The government, eh, it's like, it's like. Twelve to fifteen percent, the world payment, number one, it's like, help. The defraze, it's like, hardship. It's like. It gives, it understands, it's like, it's like. Effort, it's development partners, it's like, it's like. The government, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. W C C. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Kalbo, Senator Nakamura. It's like, it's like. It's like, question, it's like. I think, it's like, it's like. Clear how difficult it is, it's like. Come on, the contractors, it's like. The air, it's like, it's like. It's like, cash. It's like, N D B P, it's like, insurance. They all have their challenges. Cash, it's like, it's like. T N C, it's like, it's like. Two hundred percent, it's like, value, it's like, project. It's like, it's like. Then, the more, N D B P, it's like, property, it's like. Value, it's like, fifty percent value. It's like, it's like. It's like, cut, it's like, hundred percent, whatever we're doing. And then, I lost the more, the insurance. Which, it's like, foreign companies, it's like, Belau. It's like, the cash collateral. So, it's like, challenging, it's like, the language. Eh, since it's like, it's like. Criteria, procurement officer. Decide, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like. I'll open, it's like, it's like. Comment, it's like, it's like. It's like, the ultimate.
Chairman, I'm like, it's like. It's like, retain it. Since, it's like, payment progress. Since, it's like, it's like. It's like, payment progress, it's like, it's like. Oh, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like.
It's like, Mr. Takamine. It's like, it's like. Performance, a payment bond, it's like, along, it's like, retention. It's like, triple, it's like, risk, the government. Actually, it's like, ongoing practice. It's like, om rich, it's like, fifty percent, it's like, milestone, it's like. And it's like, oil, it's like, it's like. Special treatment, it reduces, it's like, retention, it's like, five percent. So, yeah, retention, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. While, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Kalbo, Senator Udim.
It's like, it's like. It's like, Revelation, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, short touch of capital, it's like, access to capital. Yeah, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Community citizens, it's like. Corporate citizens. It's like, it's like. We have to encourage them to participate. Economy, it's like, it's like. F D I C, it's like, it's like. Collective effort, it's like, encourage, it's like, participate, it's like, community. It's like, part, it's like, community. It's like, it's like. 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 Support, the local community. It's like.
It's like, Senator Udim. Comment, it's like, it's like. Maybe, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. W C C, M A G N C. It's like, it's like. Eh, eliminate, it's like, bonds. Then, again, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. There's always an inherent risk to the, to the government. And, and so, the need to be protected through bonding. Um. The realize, it's like, it's like. It's like, two hundred percent bonding is, eh, it's a, it's a, it's a showstopper to S M Es. So, and we want to increase the number of participating contractors in our infrastructure development, it's like. It's like, it's like. Eh, hundred, it's like, hundred thousand, it's like. But increasing, it's like, two fifty, it's like, armory, it's like. Eh, two fifty, it's like, five hundred, it's like, it's like. A full, eh, waiver, it's like, bond, it's like, it's like. It's like, over a five hundred thousand, it's like. It's like, it's like. By fifty percent. It's like, it's like. Investment, it's like. It's like, it's like. Investment, it's like, it's like. It gives, it's like, it's like. The government, it's like, it's like. Maybe, it's like, it's like. It's like, page four, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Items, it's like, it gives, it's like, contracting official. It's like, it's like. Decide, it reduces, it's like, it's like. A Gom Bali. Regardless, it's like, it's like. Foreign owned. So, number one, it's like. It's like, factors is substantial and identify risk pose to the government. And whether such risks would be amplified, should a waiver or reduction be granted. Number two. It gives, it's like, the contractors' best performance on similar projects in the Republic. And number three, it's like, whether vendors or subs. From the contractors' prior or ongoing projects have been satisfactorily paid. And number four, it's like, the contractor's current workload. And whether it may impact the timely delivery of the project in accordance with the contract. It's like, a deliberation, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, proposed, our members of Senate, it's like, it's like. One, it's like, it's like. It's like, the Gom Bali, it's like, holy owned. Operator, the Gom Bali, it's like, Belau. Under the definition that we will insert, it's like. More clearly define what is holy owned and what is foreign owned. Okay, then, lastly, my number six is to. Um. For the contracting officer to have that authority to look into the financial standing of the company that is asking for a waiver. So, I know that most Palawan companies don't want to share that information, but I think you will need to. Eh, work with the contracting officer to. To approve, more contracting official, it's like, yes, you have the financial capacity to handle this project, om waiver, it's like. Performance, my payment. Okay. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. That is lacking. You feel you might want to add to the, to the consider, consideration factors for waiver or reduction. Eh, please. State it now, or. It's like, it's like. It's like, written response, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Contracting official. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. While best management practice, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Waiver reduction, it's like, it's like. Waiver, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. More legislative factors, it's like. It's like, it's like. Contracting official, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, reduction, it's like, it's like. 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 Kalbo, it's like.
It will require still for upper, it's like, performance bond. It waivers, it's like, payment bond.
It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Eh, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Criteria, it's like, it's like. It's like. It's like, risky, a performance, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Waiver, it's like, it's like. Okay, it's like, it's like. Committee, it's like, it's like. Analyze, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like. It gives, it's like, factors, it's like, it's like. It's like.
It's like, one last question. It's like, it's like. Ask advance payment if they get awarded a project, and so, it's like, advance payment.
It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. They speaking from experience, it's like. It's like.
It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Help, it's like, start, it's like.
It's like, it's like. In practicing, it's like, it's like. Of course, it's like, it's like. It's like, really, so, it's like, it's like. So, normally, it's like, initial payment, payment number one, it's like. Contract, it's like, it's like. 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 W C C. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Advance, it's like, B P T. It's like, it's like. So, with that understanding, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. Payment number one, it's like, twelve to fifteen percent. They asking for advance payment. Because it's progress based payment. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like.
It's like.
Kalbo, it's like, Mr. Takamine.
It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. A progress payment. It's like, it's like. 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 Inspector, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. My minimum, my risk, it's like. It's like, 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 it's like. Understand, it's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, risking. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's like, it's like. It's very minimum risk. It's like.
It's like, it's like. Sulang, eh, Mister Tamine. Se gidl minimum risk, ka ulm, gada, gada, malas, malos, ikrole, le, mori ya, a, a, more, a regel waiver, a 250 merio, ma, cell, gok, emloli, seringi, waiver, 500,000 merio. Oh, eh, like I said, tiawo la, eh, gada, el mutl, ulgum se, seringi, into the future, wasin, gada, magarada, lutel, tweak, seringi, gok, mo atter, a, klu, ngalagisa. By the way, 700,000 local preference law, el wasa, anything under 100,000 order to wholly owned Palawan company, there are no bans. That was a time when we did road construction, $100,000 makes 1,000 feet of road. How much do you, how, how, how long of, or how short of road can you do for 100,000? And under 400 feet? Yes, so, so, tiel, tiel la, am, braniya, wa do bal, adjust, seringira, klu ngela, eh, ngarami, gok, tel gibl, komosel ba akle. At the same time, gada, tor, gyal, gyal, si, msi ira, si, ira, wa, Jimmy Construction, el, mutel gibl, mo, twa, yal tuloriri, la, di bita, loriri, anga, al, cella, government projects, sulang. Eh, kalbo, Senator Whips.
Sulang. Ngari ya, sir, gummis, etel, ulas, mul la, ing, it definitely gives the opportunity for small contractors to enter. As based on the discussion, a kmasa challenge, el face, seringi, GNC, ma WCC, ma VMJ, it's really the medium to large contractors that now have a problem. And the problem has to come with uh, the bonds. Eh, medik, let me just run some numbers for everyone to understand the challenge they're facing. For example, a WCC, at tsukum, a project load, seringi, a one million ra year, for example, I know it's more than that. And ngolit, ra contracting officer, was a, mem, reduce ra bonds down to 50%. But there's actually, I mean, uh, two types of security. Reduce it to 50%, so the contracting officer agrees to 50%. But that only takes care of payment, 50%, and then there ngari, performance, at 50%, so it's still 100%. And ang, what, what is WCC's choice right now? Am I gonna go to the bank, open a standby letter of credit, tie up cash? I have to withhold my, uh, do my advance payment for BPT, I'm holding cash? A last, el option, seringi, a either, more a insurance company, which is also expensive, they charge on a percentage, and they require you to audit your financial statements, which also costs money. You gotta hire someone else to do that. So, the last option, a more NDBP. So, in order for WCC to get a performance and payment bond from NDBP, he must have 1.4 million dollars in land secured for 1 million dollars in project. And, and why is this the case? Then I raise ra threshold, almost 70% on the appraised value. So, at tsukum, gada, already require the post, ra performance and payment bonds of 1 million, cause it's 50, plus 50, yet based on NDBP's calculation, he has to discount, a gyal, utam losis, by seven, by 30%. So, in actually, to do 1 million dollars worth of project, he needs 1.4 million dollars appraised value of real property. Um, se gidla challenge, how many of these contractors have 1.4 million dollars in land? Or half a million, or 3 million? That's the biggest limiting factor from the small to medium, of small contractors to move to the medium size, and even large size. A quad, mne, so, alcher, a gyal, I know a little bit about it. Proposal, nga, radik, tli. Ngari ya, language, was a, performance and payment bond. If we could change the language to make them combined, it'll solve a lot of problems. Mal reduce by 50, and bral reduce by 50, ndeja, reduce 50, reduce 50, abolda, aika dirga 100%. A gyal risk, losa, da, uh, bili, amaran, it's progress payment, the risk is mitigated.
Sulang, Senator, ngiri, abangle, cell, yes, that's one option, il diregal, ulgum se, tiel gidl, amendment, da, gada, mor se gidl, section two, ra page two, emro kuru li, mo, dia, al tool, galarusel banda, motmakal, dimo imol banda. Oh, latal, aktive, nga, public works, um, latal, bo, ngiya, argument, ablongel, one, the contractor, ra la, al wasi, ngend, ma or. Etien, etien, da la, amlo, amlo, amle prevail, tumlo, tumlo supply, tu. And eh, yes, cell, cell optional proposal, nga, Senator, ngiri, abangla, bral, diregal, ngari ya, value, nga, se, a committee, mo consider, nga, ulgum se. A, a, guli nit, ma, do, do, eh, do, do, si, imade, lemai, pol, pol, par, tra regor, da, adang, eh. Se, the, again, ngar, ngari ya, uh, positive value, cell proposal, ra, Senator, ngiri, abangla, um, diregal, mal, diwa, gumiul, diregal, mal, mal, akl, madengi, ngiya, gyal, bonding. Um, a committee, mo, ulgum se, se gidl, se gidl, wasi, lasa be edel, el, mor, cell page two, ra, cell line, 20, more, 27, eh, osi, krore, saka, magaranga, do, da, amandimo, one, el, band. Mor se gidl, olgor, nga, Senator, ngiri, abangla, wasi, cell, do, reduce, seringi, mo 50%, and bral 50%. Um, ndeja, al, 200% telang, 100% trawan, 100% trawan, om reduce, and di, 100%. Om, kom, di, gali, met, telang, yeah. Kabo, eh, Mister Tamine.
I already two cents, nga, so, al ede, sel, sel, gara, ngale, ngal official, me, ngiya, mo decide, kumsi, cell wave? Sen, cell, gam, turn in a financial report, kama. Most, kama, gan, taktor, sa, ulte, a leverage, ma credit, a gim, legal project. Kalibal, ula, di, kims, kola, disqualified, rogu.
Adolgor, nga, se gidl, proposed, langwits, el mor se, lemle, bela, offer, nga, one, ra Senator, wasi, at tsukum, diregal, mori, a, kisi, la government, el, ulgum se, ra financial capacity, ngala, at, wasin, ngari ya, at, 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 the, 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 reduce, mal ubeng, gada, waiver, tiel, performance, map payment, pandingi. And cell risk, ra government, um, gada, magarada, mitigate, seringi, ngal, gombali, bral, se, edulit, yang, oh, ak, magal, ya, mulgor, nga. Etien al mulgor, nga, mosoi, super cell, item, mosoi, super cell, item, two, three, ma four. Oh, um, sen, al, al, tan, di, ulgum se, ege gidl, wasi, komle, wa, ra, urere, emrti, al nomre, gara. Uh, kau, komla, dil, er, tiel project, traga, mla, motela, ra. Ulgum se, ege gidl, at tsukum, ulgum se, ege gidl, dirgong song, sen, amo, wasi, kami, financial, met, ra. Adam, sulang.
Kadi, kadi, do, eh, ege, se, diregal, gor, ah, kama, mal, muru, lam, multiple projects, eh, gok, salba, mo, ma, car, cell analysis, ra balance sheet, eh, at to what extent, at the, at, include, ah, decisions, or si, asa, gada, kip, seringi. And then, ah, to, ah, was, proposal, ra, Senator Whips, ok, palungil, um, daso, mama, tor, kama, madir, gim, tama, la, urer, ma, se, gal, lal, lal, lutel, morio, mindi, ngil, adang, sulang.
Sulang, eh, BMJ, amal, classic, example, ra, baska, in, chaka, su, mama, eh.
Uh, any more comments, sir, you wanna say something? Okay, um, uh, 680? December?
Ali, kom, mal, misaw, ulmala, miskama, malungil tokoi. Ek mama, this, embe, ra, mal, dirgo, mu, la, adirga, tarra, ra, gim, dimo, la, a, gyal, el project, ta, wa, PPUC, ma, a, 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 state, etiregal, su, mama, mulgor, ol, da, sa, imo, ma, mot, tiel gidl, gera, government. Maktong okle, dimla, kusakal, munda, du, elang, ak, ne, suakal, oren, se, tri, gal, tiram, gata, tal, merut, ra, urer. Dik pay, de, oren, asuliw. El nas, ibul, ngoy, kama, al, mge, gare, l, ol, chis, ba, kama, el morti, al, urer. To go, bes, el mor, sel, ulgor, nga, Senator, nga, abangla, se, bi, ya, gal, el, ngusul, el mor, a, gyal, mge, gare. Eba, y, tel gibl, mo, terigel, gok, kara, a, f, ay, bil, wo, lo, se, seringi, el mor, se. Ulgum se, ulgum se, ul, 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 gare, gare, el, ya, mlong song, se. Eki, bral, wasi, la, gim, bral, eki, mo, mot, abid, tiang, ya, almei, and, adeka, mukntir, kama, rogu, um, amaran, sulang. Sulang, eh, Mister Obake. Deka, member, ngari ya, ngari ya, question, seringi, more contractors, wa, le, ta, ta, ngat, tiel, ulgum, gid. Yap, ngari ya, uh, Mister Titim, ndi gak, kurasam, ulgum?
Mal, misaw, le, chairman, eh, kama, mal, mge, gyal, contractors, el, a, ngak, mal, ngal, ta, ngat, le, gil, wek, kati, gal, midium, ul, mong. Um, a, gey gidl, bladong, ul, issues, a, gyal, bral, a, gim, basa, ra, pek, talta. Um, ngari ya, blad, blad, address, um, dasin, klot, utel, el, awa, di, metal, um, das, seringi, wasin, en, kli, le, wasi, el, mori, nga, wara, grading system, ra, gyal, gombali. Ngara, ABC, merio. Um, provide, ah, provide, ah, information, gil, a, gombali, ra, gau, pass, el portfolio. Eh, CIP, il, review, ma, da, cut off, ay, bil, buto, ul, ul, issue, ra, wa, cell, a, gom, sapmit, ra, beda, gata, dim, me, di, kusen, ga, grade, eh, in, VNC. Eh, wa, ngara, klu, ngel, gombali. Eh, ba, y, intel gibl, a, se, el, mosugid, ra. Wasi, um, magar, a, kautral, gato, fra, kama, al, process, ra. Ling, ebri, gid, se, edel, sapmit. Kalme, gat, pala, isin, cell, gau, kalme, tiel, al, adam. Wa, ngara, sta, ru, cell, gau, ngara, na, mmera, gyal, project, ra, gau. Eh, kom, komla, ra, file, la, gombali, komda, braniya, komla, gombali, a. Abangla, sta, ru, seringi, la, misel, me, gyal, bi, tiang, rang, tiang, rang, tiang, rang. Etiregal, tra, distribute, ul, ul, ikbul, ul, mora, ma, klu, ngel, gombali. Ma, project, ta, etiregal, se, edel, malme, one, el project, di, kom, divide, seringi, ndeja, kadi, mul, one, klo, el project, el, sa, imo, klo, or midium, ul, gombali. Asa, ala, edga, splitter, tiang, el mo, se, el, me, gombali, l, gu, klo, tiang, a, midium, ma, klo, tiang, ma, mo, klo, klo, tiang. Ling, mal, buto, ar, contractors. Amen, power, ngari. Di, base, la, gai, gyal, buto, requirement. Ling, mmering, ra, da, gay, gay, da, sa, el, morti, al, imo, gare, gare, miti, to, ul. Ngwa, di, ulas, ma, ki, du, li, a, gyal, la, se, edel, internal.
Sulang. Ya, kusulang, eh, Mister Titim, ra, uh, a, comment, seringi, cell, tginge, la, a, grading, ra, contractors, ah, kli, lungil, bol, gor, a, management initiative, ra, obisa CIP, by the, the SOP city, deka, ah, standard operating procedure, etta, di, tir, ul, la, gal, doru, ngiil, language, ra, la. Ling, kageru, samuklu, ra, contractor, kageru, samuklu, ra, urer, lolai, kageru, sel, a, gey gidl, eh, ngar, akle, la, ader, ir, ra, urer, a, gyal, gok, expertise, tir, ngari ya, gok, uh, se, bi, il, ngara, construction, eh, ngara, landscaping, eh, ngara, akle, il. Angari, ngi, terigel, gok, mal, di, gok, dis, il, mesment, ra, el. Um, 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 dasin, aba, yungil, ba, il, bo, ngiya, dialogue, ulgum, gela, obisa CIP. Eh, wasi, gada, magaranga, da, bodra, lila, mo, SOP, tir, grading, tir, a, gidl. Eh, cell, the, pora, gyal, allocation, ra, project. Allocation, ra, project, ah, happen, ra, dalong, le, la, um, ya, madengi, gong, uh, obisa, Ministry of Finance, ra, Executive Branch, ma, MPII, ma, obisa President. So, eh, cell, do, mes, seringi, ra, gyal, practice, ra, last, el, five, six years. Mla, mo, di, gaha, project, el, 100,000 or below. Mla, mo, di, start, eh, 250,000. Ma, ulm, gada, amen, dr, tiel, la, wasi, don, eh, si, se gidl, bni, 100,000, a, more, a regel, ul, mo, 250, bom, sel, ba, akle. Bom, bo, la, gable, ul, om, sapmit, ah, kom, mo, a, more, a regel, we, bo. Eh, cell, 250, mo, 500, ta, se, edel, mes, gumiul, di, pen, ra, ege, gidl, criteria, gidha, mo, mes, se, gidl, last, el, nga, ra, last, page, abil. So, yes, kusulang, a, comment, sergai. By the way, tiel, meeting, rigid, osi, seal, meeting, amo, happen, ulgum, gela, uh, obisa, rigid, ra, public works, ma, Palau Housing, ma, NDPP, diregal, gok, mo, uk, mal, a, feedback, tir, a, ul, the swir, il, gire, tiang, ama. Etiregal, chua, gok, mo, understand, se, gidl, process, tir, especially NDPP, wasi. Um, magar, a, cell, a, gyal, gok, pal, sis, tir, a, aika, gid, to, ra, bonding, eh, maybe, through that dialogue, um, asa, be edel, gok, urer, ulgum, trir, eh, tel gibl, uli, tiel, to, ra, bonding, etiregal, mo, ora, attractive, eh, deka, sal, mal, op, ting, ul, 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 sulang. Uh, MNA, any comments? Uh, WCTC? Okay, at tsukum, ndi, gak, comment, eh, president, ndi, gak. Uh, FR, yes.
Good afternoon, sir, senators and everyone. Uh, we are from WE Construct, sir. Uh, as I've heard from the discussion, sir, uh, we really appreciate the SB 1222. But as I can honestly say, we are a small contractor here in Palau. I can honestly say that, because we only cater private projects alike. But the projects that we cater and previously completed is more than the 250,000 amount. We are more, 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 more projects, uh, projects that we are catering right now is NDPP projects and private projects. So, we cannot bid on, or we cannot go on this, uh, CIP projects because of the bonding. Uh, maybe, sir, it will be, we really appreciate that this SB 1222, uh, the intention is to, at least, small contractors like us, we can bid for small projects, like 100 to 250. Is it possible, sir, that most of bid bond can be part of the, uh, waving? Uh, because, uh, if we will really think, sir, bid bond requires all the contractors to participate. Uh, so, the premium, or will directly goes to the insurance company, sir. Uh, since you mentioned that, uh, senators, Senator Whips, mentioned that, uh, small projects like us, uh, we can, there is an evaluation process. So, you mentioned also, sir, that, uh, during the negotiation, uh, the awarding, uh, they will look as, look at our financial status. Uh, wherein, let's say, experience wise, we already completed more than that amount, like, say, 400,000 plus 300,000 plus private projects. And then the 250, this is really good for us, because if there is no private projects anymore, we cannot, maybe, it's hard for us to maintain our company. So, what I'm thinking, sir, is possible to waive also the bid bond. And then, um, um, another thing, sir, is, uh, yeah, 250,000 down, you can bid, uh, waive the bid bond. Santina, da, sir. I can say, honestly say, we are a small contractor, unlike other contractors, sir, maybe millions of projects, 500,000, but we have completed a lot of projects, less than that amount.
Thank you, can you restate your name and company?
Uh, I'm Neff Makasaid, sir, from WE Construct.
WE?
WE.
Okay, okay, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you for your, uh, comment on the bid bond. Uh, somebody asked to waive the bid bond. The purpose of the bid bond is to protect the government's interest. Should you choose to abandon an award letter that is given to you as the winning bidder? Uh, so, it, to, to waive it, is, is going to open, uh, the bidding to anyone who can write a proposal and submit. And the procurement process becomes a Mickey Mouse procurement, because we're gonna have uh, smaller than small, medium enterprise bidders to come in, and they're, at the end, they're gonna probably pull out, so, So the purpose of that bid bond is to protect against that interest. And as I explained, the practice now is, when you are awarded a project. And you sign that notice award and execute a contract with the government, all the bid bonds return to the bidders. So it's not really money that's lost. It's just a security for the government, which will eventually be returned. Because eventually, the government will enter into a contract, whether it's you or another company. So, as I said, it's, uh, it's just a piece of your finance that the government holds and then eventually returns to you. Yeah, so, sorry, there's no interest of the committee to, to waive the bid bond. Uh, I think it, it amplifies the risk to the government. Uh, any more comments, questions? Lomisita temede, uh, tuhori, eh, omisra, yes, kabonge mister Suzuki, usubes.
Yake, chairman, akteo renasuliwe, tiya le laa malungil, diregal hel programa, ngara, ngara, ngarahmaligare il shobai. Mta nga, diregal, it's an eye opener, akmleima, diregal loren se trigal makloro contractor. Aktilu ba batok, ule dimla ksa el mangadudu, a, dira kwa pora alisel. Yegedan mora alisel ma domadudu, kwa se ngarang adam saad. Di domisala e malungil, akumisringi it's a step forward, a gel omdilung, kuk mosamam, mgegaril contractors, luksmam, kuk ngua one foot, ra ilalchel tiang. So, uh, kudo ustuyu, ma members eh, ilagwa ditinek?
Yaq mtsulangi, mister Suzuki, without further comments eh, akti, where a close aktil mutlmerengasuliw, ngantaktorsel. El, komivi, a development partners er gida, ablo bela toora infrastructure. Eh, kwa the madengi washe, bekra kwa, although drastimilusel momoit ra infrastructure ra, mblao li ngarwa bra 8 million, ra bekra. Eh sel domisitya eda trend, eh, al time, komivi, ndiregal ngarii komivi. Abaklo ra projects ra CIP, all the way back to 2020. Ngariya dirga incomplete projects ra CIP. Eh, ndiye kwa se eda blame ra ngantaktor ringi, tesalasa. Malbatoga urior lolap, malbatoga contract solap. And then, ndiye kwa choice government, le sel tal libid, eng tirigayedel ose siul bidos, tirigayedel asagari. Mmm, amokte kwa tiang, a, a, telgibel uli, mmo biot, rkomivi, oredi komonbor, tolo ya ga waiver, mmo redaksion. Ose siul time, kwa diregal, telgibel ose sni sel asimre, moklo muspira, mgegaril mesohis. Eh, yes, akamiti mal understanda a gel, el comments ra adal, wa washe, eliminate. Uh, as much as we probably want to eliminate, ndiye kwa se eda eliminate, because as you understand, there's that inherent risk to the, to the government. Alsukuma kwa the fully way ba egal elwanda. Akmal merengasulia ra bekal ngantaktors, eh, merongit tiya meeting er gida, akteo ai se komirogu washe. A gida regal, mlaschedule ra, moosisiul meeting lobentiri ra government stakeholders. Mainly a CIP officer, Bureau of Public Works, ma National Development Bank, ma Palau Housing. El tirangarii komivi, a participate a gel guk development programs etir. Washe, alsukuma ngariya impact el mortire, is it positive or negative? And how can we address those, tolo ya kwa tiya eda proposed el bid? Mmm, again, akmal, obteera kamiti, ma senate president, ma floor leader. Eh, malmutlmerengasulia ngantaktors, eh, akulonitela washe, do almol, mmm, ngarii tiya eda, delwiler gida, se eda adudu eda. Uh, dosikrole washe, kwa the magaranga do, ose muokortiya toora procurement, el mungir ra bekla, omansularo gui.